All right, thank you, and thanks to all of you all who joined us today. Calling this meeting in order, Madam Clerk, please call Row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Here.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderman Bosley.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Con. Twenty-five present.
Hey, Quorum being present, we are just truly blessed today to have with us Bishop Elijah Hankerson III from Life Center International Church of God in Christ. He was former president of the clergy coalition. He's one of the top elected members in the entire Church of God in Christ worldwide, which boasts over six and a half million members now. So we are indeed blessed to have such a gifted and committed bishop here in the city of St. Louis that works beyond the walls of his church to make our city better. He's on his way to Decatur. I know Alderwoman Tyus, that means something to you, so he's on his way to your hometown right now. But he is going to take out of his time to lead us in prayer this morning. Thank you, Alderwoman Pam Boyd, for inviting Bishop Hankerson today. Bishop Hankerson, where are your hands? Bishop Hankerson?
Yes, God bless you. I'm sorry, I had a little bad signal, I'm driving on the highway. But thank you, President Reed, for this opportunity. Let me pull over on the side of the road. Thank you so much, and we're going to get ready to go into prayer. And as we do, I just want to thank you not only for this opportunity, but also make mention that the last time I was with you all, my wonderful wife was yet in the land of the living. And obviously, all of you know that she passed away in June of 2021. And so I want you to know that we appreciate your prayers for the family and continue to pray for us. Also, thank you so much for that wonderful remark in regard to my recent election to the General Board of the Church of God in Christ. I have learned how to run for office from many of you. And so I want to appreciate you for the example that you have set. And then following your pattern, I thank God for this wonderful opportunity. Father, we thank you for this wonderful time that you've allowed us to come together with the tremendous leaders of this great city of opportunity. Thank you, Father, for these great leaders that you have raised up to lead us and to direct us for the benefit of the community, the benefit of our citizens. Now, we pray that you would bless this time of meeting together and that you would be in the midst and that you would touch, lead, guide, and direct, and crown each and every one of their head with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, foresight and insight. Do it in your precious name, we pray. And we'll thank you right now, in Jesus' name, let everyone say amen.
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 Bishop Hankerson, thank you so much for joining us today and leading us off in prayer. You have a safe trip. We can't wait to see you back in St. Louis. Don't get out of Decatur and decide to stay. We'll send somebody out there to pick you up, bring you back. All right, thanks Bishop Hankerson.
Thank you Bishop.
Thank you Bishop.
Everybody join me in a round of applause and thanks.
Be associated with this city. God bless.
Thank you.
Before we go on, a couple of things. We have a celebrity birthday today, Tom Oldenburg. I hear it's your birthday today, let's give him a big round of applause.
Happy Birthday!
Pump it up for Tom.
Happy Birthday!
Happy Birthday!
Thank you all.
We're twenty-five.
I don't know if one of the Alderwomen would like to step up and talk about why we're all wearing red today. Alderwoman Davis.
Alderman, I wanted one of the younger colleagues to do it, please.
All right. Shamine Clark Hubbard. Annie, Megan. Somebody step up and do it. Jump in there.
Somebody.
Annie's on it. I'll jump in here real quick. So today, we are all wearing red. February is Heart Health Awareness Month. And the first Friday in February, we wear red to bring awareness to heart disease as it is the number-one killer of Americans and particularly of women. And so it's not something that we have traditionally thought of as a disease for women. And so we are trying to bring awareness to women because signs of heart disease are different in women than they are in men. So we're trying to bring awareness that everybody take good care of your hearts and get those checkups that you need, get that exercise, eat well, do everything we can because we want to keep everybody around as long as possible. So thank you all to all of our colleagues for wearing red, red hats, red scarves, as much red as we can get. So thank you all so much.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
Introduction round of guests, any introduction round of guests? Hold on, Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I just wanted to tap in a little more, especially by it being Black History Month, we all know that it treats and affects Black women disproportionately. My grandmother passed from heart disease, as well as our very own Clerk, Sharita Rogers. So we also do this since it's so close to us in honor of her sister. In honor of her sister, we wear this red in solidarity and standing with the way this disease affects not just women, but men as well, but wear red especially for women this day. So thank you, Mr. President, for giving us the opportunity to have this platform to get the word out. And if anyone wants any additional information on this, please reach out to the Board of Aldermen and we will get it to you. Thank you.
Right, excellent. You want to tell them how to reach out to you, Alderwoman?
Oh, they can call the Board of Aldermen's office, reach out to... Of course, everybody knows they can reach out to me. You put me on the spot, Mr. President. Everybody knows they can reach out to me, but I'm saying as a whole, how the Board of Aldermen is standing in solidarity with National Wear Red Day, they can reach out to the Clerk's office and we can give them some information, websites, different ways that they can support this cause. Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you all. Alderwoman from the fourth?
Good morning. I'd like to acknowledge Julia Allen as one of my special guests, as well as Laura Hughes and my committee people, Carolyn Moore and Ed McFaul. Happy Heart Day.
Yeah, welcome all of them. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you had your hand up, but then it went down. I don't know if you still want...
I don't have any. I'll save it for later, okay?
Alderwoman from the eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Today, I would like to have as my special guest a constituent of mine. Her name is Rachel DeSouza Seibert. She is a survivor of a SCAD heart attack. And this is a really devastating heart attack that took place for her after her pregnancy. Has a very low survivability rate, and I am so glad that she did survive, that she is here, and that she is such an incredible advocate for St. Louis and for heart health and for women. So thanks for having Rachel.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I wanted to have in a heavily remembers as my guest, all of my women from my family. The average age of a woman in my family for past hundred years, they never lived past age sixty-five. So I can't refer to aunts or grandmothers or anybody like that. And this generation that I'm in, my sister and I are the first ones to pass age sixty-five. So thank you.
Wow, well. Keep on keeping on. I think, you know, it looks like progress is being made, was good, I understand, because same type of thing in my family also, so. Appreciate it. Alderman from the twenty-third?
I have two of them today. Always my friend Greg Meyer, but tomorrow is my wife Sue's birthday, and she hit retirement age. So it's her birthday tomorrow, but she's off today. In the other room, maybe she's cooking something out of it.
All right, so Happy Birthday to you, too. And then Alderman from the third?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce as my honored guest the spirit of Emmett Till today, who was wrongfully accused of doing some things back in the nineteen fifty by a lady named Carolyn Bryant, and was beat. And we still have not gotten any justice while this lady lived. So I would like to introduce him as my honored guest and his spirit among us. Thank you.
Right, all right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. In honor of Black History Month, as well as Women's Heart Month, I would like to introduce as my special guest all the heroes and she-heroes that have gone before us in this city of St. Louis that have fought for our civil rights and made sure that we are able to be a very diverse group of board of aldermen. That wasn't always the case. And first, the first Black alderman were Republicans because we were still fighting the fight of slavery. And Democrats, the Dixiecrats, used to be the people that enslaved us. So for many years, Blacks were Republicans. And in fact, the first five or six aldermen here were Republicans. So in that spirit, I want to give honor to some of the women who are leading our city now, from the mayor to the comptroller to the circuit attorney to the license collector, right? And then also just for honor for some of the people who were here. Bill Clay Senior used to be an alderman here. So I thank him for his guidance and his leadership, not junior, but senior. And so I'm always thankful and reflective as the beginning of Black History Month comes about how can I be respectful and also show that I acknowledge and honor that I sit here and now I have a lot of weight on my shoulders to make sure that I do something that people want to follow in my footsteps. Because those people, I helped some of the people I just named, and some of them, I'm following in their footsteps. But so for me, February is equally on two parts. And I did also want to say that the bishop is going to be my special guest. You won't get him back from Decatur because I called my people while I was out and told them just to keep him there. He shouldn't be on the highway anyway. These roads are dangerous, okay? He's actually going to meet with my first, one of my first boyfriends, Bishop Allen, who took his father's place in Decatur. So he's now the bishop because his father passed on a couple of years ago. But I did call my family and said that just keep him there, that we just needed him there. St. Louis had a lot of high-ranking officials, but we needed something in Decatur, and he won't want to come back anyway when he goes there, and he has a good time. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Any further, Alderwoman from the thirteenth?
Thank you so much, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have city employees from the Streets Department and our Public Safety workers for all they have done over the last few days as we've been buried in snow here. But there are seven inches of snow in St. Louis. So thank you to everyone who's keeping us safe out there. It's so appreciated. And I hope that you get some rest this weekend.
Right. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from tenth, I'd like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. We gather here on February the fourth, 2022. On this day in seventeen eighty-nine, George Washington was appointed the first President of the United States. In fifty-five, nineteen fifty-five, James Brown recorded, please, please, please. Now, this is, as you said, National Wear Red Day, but as most holidays, days of dates these days have more than one holiday, this is also Work Naked Day. So I'm glad most of you made the right choice, because I'm going to make the right choice also.
There you go.
Okay?
I like the hat. All right, approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, January the twenty-eighth, 2022.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the approval of the minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from January twenty-eighth, 2022.
All right, Alderman from tenth, second about Alderman twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor, signify or stand up?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counters? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counters? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill one seventy-six sponsored by Alderwoman Evans and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December sixteenth, 2021 for the forty-one hundred through forty-one thirty-four Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area. Board Bill one seventy-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel and the remaining two hundred and five-foot irregular-shaped portion of the twenty-foot wide east-west alley and city block nineteen sixty, beginning at Spring Avenue and continuing eastward to its terminus as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Peel and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate a portion of the air rights above a portion of Newstead Avenue in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, and authorizing construction of a portion of a structure in the vacated area under certain terms and conditions. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill one seventy-six. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill one seventy-seven and one seventy-eight. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of hoods with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one sixty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Colder, and Alderwoman Evans. And ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis establishing public works and improvement projects within the city of St. Louis from Shoto Avenue to Washington Avenue, from Shoto Avenue to I sixty-four and River City Casino Boulevard to Dover Street contained an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill one fifty-three sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a triangular-shaped excessive portion of Seventh Street, beginning at Marion Street and extending northward four six five point six five feet along city block three seven seven to a point in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one fifty-four sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the easternmost foot wide east-west alley in city block two-two-one-two as bounded by Gracie, Teresa, Pappen, and Grant in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with a Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one fifty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in a triangular-shaped excessive portion of Delmar beginning at Grand Avenue and extending eastwardly approximately two seven two point two eight five abutting in city block ten sixty-two in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with a Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one fifty-seven sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the irregular strip of Dr. Martin Luther King and irregular strip of Ninth Street bearing with width the sixteen-foot wide east-west alley in city block one seven four as bounded by Convention Plaza, Ninth Street, Lucas, and Tenth Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one fifty-eight sponsored by Alderman Colder and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the southern fifty-three feet of Cole Street from Seventh Street to Tenth Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one sixty-one sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in an irregular portion of the Cochran Place to appoint said areas being part of cul-de-sac in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one sixty-two sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in North-South Alley and the Western East-West Alley in city block two-seven-one as bounded by Cole, Tucker, Martin Luther King Drive, and Thirteenth Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one sixty-three sponsored by Alderwoman Howard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine five and ordinance directing the directive streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-nine-hundred block, five-thousand-hundred block, fifty-two-hundred block, and fifty-three-hundred blocks of Sutherland Avenue as herein prescribed. Board Bill one seventy-one sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the northernmost east-west alley in city block three seven eight seven imposing certain conditions on such vacation. The following board bills were reported out of the Health Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one sixty-six sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the Department of Health to accept COVID-nineteen response grant assistance through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion award up to one million four hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and four dollars from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one sixty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the Department of Health to accept a national association of county and city health officials implementing overdose prevention strategies at the local level grant of five hundred thousand dollars contained in emergency clause. Board Bill one sixty-nine sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the Department of Health to accept an additional amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for the amended COVID-nineteen response grant assistance through the epidemiology and laboratory capacity CARES award from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, bringing the total of appropriation under such award of a hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars contained in emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading reported standing committee.
Dispense with line item fourteen, Alderwoman from the first?
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I didn't know if you saw. I agreed to help Alderman Todd, Board Bill one seventy-one. He wishes to suspend the rules and bring it down to the perfection consent calendar from the second reading calendar.
Right. So you want to make the motion?
I want to move to move, oh, I want to make the motion to move Board Bill one seventy-one down from the second reading to the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first.
Second.
Suspend the rules, the second about Alderwoman from the nineteenth that we suspend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill one seventy-one from second reading calendar to the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion?
I have a little bit. Mr. President, this is for a new bank that's going to go in North St. Louis. I usually don't get into other aldermen's business, but since this will be around the corner for me. No, actually, no, it's a really great project that one of our former members, Urban League, is working with, the Sears Building. Mr. McMillan is actually cleaning up the Sears Building and caught connection with Alderman from the eighteenth. And this will be a wonderful project. This will be another new bank. And that's one of the things we sorely missed in North St. Louis. I built the first new bank. Now, it's been thirty, almost thirty years ago in North St. Louis. So I'm happy to see that the twenty-second ward built a bank a few years ago, and now we're getting another one. And this is north of Page, so anything that's coming north of Page that we can get done is sorely needed. And this will be a beautiful project.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. And I stand, it's just as excited as Alderwoman Tyus on this project, you know? But I think another thing that should be noted is that this is also an act of restorative justice and financial empowerment in our community here in North Delmar. Because this bank, Simmons Bank, is replacing a check cashing place, is replacing a payday loan place. So this is an example of the work that we can do here, the work that we can do absolutely collectively with the Urban League under the leadership, the amazing leadership of Michael McMillan, to do these type of projects and show that our communities want this, we deserve this, and we're going to make it work and show out. So thank you, Alderman Todd, for bringing this up. Thank you, Alderwoman Tyus, for bringing up all those points about how this, you know, that there's something to be proud of. It might only be the third that we can name right now, but we moving and we making change.
That's correct.
Again, you know, we just a little bit more proud this month because it's Black History Month. I know, but listen, this right here is the example of empowering our communities, financially empowering our communities and educating our communities. So thank you again, Alderman Todd and Alderwoman Tyus.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I wanted to also give a thank you not only to the former alderman of the nineteenth ward, Michael McMillan, but I also wanted to thank Simmons Bank and the bank that they bought out, which was Reliance Bank. So we have had a great partnership in trying to do the right thing, and I want to give them all the credit for staying on track, being of purpose. Reliance Bank opened their first city facility at Grand and Bell Avenue. I want to say it was about seven years ago. So what we're looking at is people who are working with us with purpose. And those are the kinds of things we have to do for the future. You form relationships, you nurture them. You also teach them about you, your culture, and your needs. And people will help. So this is, I'm so excited. And I really thank the Alderwoman from the first ward. And people will help, so this is, I'm so excited, and I really thank uh, the Alderman from the first ward. The Alderman from the twenty sixth ward, and most especially the Alderman of the eighteenth ward. For making sure that we are not only giving praise, but working very diligently to get these things moved. In a timely way, so that they can also say to their other colleagues. That you can do the same thing in another part of North St. Louis, thank you.
All right, thank you all, um, any further discussion, further discussion, we move about all one from the first, second about all the one from the nineteenth. And we spend our rules for the purposes of moving board bill one seventy one from second reading calendar to. Calendar to the perfection consent calendar, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman and Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Gunther, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Ty.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Twenty eight I votes.
I wrote, stay in motion, all the ones from the first and spend the rules for the purposes of moving board bill one seventy one. To the perfection consent count, and Madam Clerk, please make notes, place board bill one seventy one. On the end of the perfection consent count.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board bill one forty nine sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance repealing ordinance number seven zero five seven three and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses. For any currently non licensed premises within the boundaries of Third Ward Liquor Control District. As established herein for a period of five years contained in emergency clause. Board bill one fifty five as amended sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently. Non licensed premises within the boundaries of the eighteenth Ward Liquor Control District. As established herein for a period of five years from the effective date here of contained in emergency clause. Board bill one seventy one sponsored by Alderman Todd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface surface and subsurface rights. For vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the northernmost east west alley in city block three seven eight seven imposing certain conditions on such vacation. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move from the tenth, second about all from twenty second, any discussion? Been moved and seconded that we adopt our perfection consent count, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Work bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board bill one thirty, board bill one forty eight, and board bill one forty two.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Second.
Move about all from tenth, second about all from twenty second, any discussion? Been moved and seconded that we adopt our third reading consent count, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman and Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Ty.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Twenty eight I votes.
I vote, stay in motion, all of them from the tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments and final passage.
Board bill one thirty, one forty eight, and one forty two.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix this signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. All one from the nineteenth, you recognize on motion for courtesy resolutions count.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Second.
Been moved by all of them from the nineteenth, second about all, all of them from the twenty second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution one seventy two sponsored by President Reed and Alderman and Gracia. Health Commissioners Order Number Eight for COVID nineteen.
All one from the sixth, you recognize on first reading of resolution one seventy two.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt resolution one seventy two.
Uh, want to request unanimous consent first.
Sure, I request unanimous consent of resolution one seventy two.
Here no objection, you now recognize all the woman, uh, make the motion.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt resolution one seventy two.
Move from the sixth, second about all, all of them from the ninth and the all the one from the eighth, I believe. Or is it the all the one from the twentieth? Eight, um, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution one seventy two, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, second reading resolutions.
Resolution one seventy sponsored by Alderman Stevens requesting Governor Poison declare it a state of emergency for the city of St. Louis.
Uh, Alderman from the twelfth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution one seventy.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I'm happy to say that resolution one seventy passed out of Health and Human Services Committee with a due pass recommendation, however, Mr. President. I would like to present a discussion item to the board, if it's all the same to you. Um, debating whether or not this is the time for this, so.
All right, okay, so I think, um, uh, when I open it up for questions, people will be able to inquire. Inquire of you and, um, uh, you know. Add those discussion pieces, so if you just start with your discussion, uh, and part of your discussion can be, is it time for this?
Right, you're open and and just say to your colleagues, you're open to recommendations.
And we'll take it from there, I'm sure they'll jump in from there, so please proceed, all.
Perfect, thank you, and thank you for always uh, helping navigate the uh, parliamentarian process, I was appreciated. Um, so, resolution one seventy, dear colleagues, is uh, merely a request upon the governor to declare a state of emergency for the city of St. Louis. Um, first and foremost, I want to say that a state of emergency. Sounds alarming, it sounds dire for all intents and purposes, but truly in a governmental sense. It merely serves to act as a trigger for additional forms of additional avenues of personnel, resources and funding. So a state of emergency is what allows our city emergency management agency to request additional resources, funding and personnel from the state. And likewise, the state from FEMA. Um, in meeting with. Various members of the health community yesterday, such as Dr. Garza, um, a member of SEIU's Health and Missouri Union. And the SEMA Commissioner themselves. The question ultimately at hand is. Is now the time to recommend or to request a state of emergency from the governor? Um, we see that new cases are plateauing, if not falling, we perhaps have crested with the Omicron variant. The data has been very difficult to forecast, as we can all imagine. Um, that was one of the greatest difficulties in drafting this with the Director of Health, with uh, the pandemic task force, with the other stakeholders. And, uh. It's sort of an odd position in that have we missed the, the peak of it in terms of requesting a. Um, a state of emergency and do we put on the informal calendar to move it to. Uh, whenever we, we once again ride this crazy wave, or do we make this request now? Uh, and to that, I would yield to my, uh, to my dear colleagues for any questions or any amendments proposed.
All right, thank you, Alderman, and I, let me just say, um, and not as a discussion piece, but. Uh, the way you presented that and giving your colleagues an opportunity to, to weigh in and being open to pausing it. Um, uh, it's, it's something that's admirable, so, so thank you for that. Um, any discussion, any discussion? Uh, Alderman from the, from the, um, from the twelfth. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to, to motion.
You can always still move it to the, to the informal calendar, but just to uh, make sure it's before us, although. Uh, our rules allow, uh, this, the discussion. Um, or the presentation of resolutions prior to motions, uh, for the, for the, uh, for the sponsor. Uh, but just to make sure that on the second reading calendar that we're in proper form. Um, so it's been moved by Alderman from the twelfth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all the one from the thirteenth, Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, with the Alderman from the twelfth, yield for questions, please.
Alderman from the twelfth, we yield a question to Alderman from the sixteenth.
Yes.
Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, President, thank you, Alderman, uh, for bringing this discussion point via resolution to us. You mentioned that there were, and this is sort of out of a curious nature, you mentioned that there were additional resources. That, um, can be brought to bear when, uh, a city or a political subdivision is under a state of emergency. What, what are some of those, what are those, those resources, and is it additional funding, is it an ability to mobilize with, uh. Uh, across governments in terms of, um, state and local municipality working together, federal resources? I, I'm just kind of curious to, to understand that a little bit more.
Absolutely, so, uh, speaking from the, uh, from the conversations I've had with the City Emergency Management Agency Commissioner. It's all of the above, which you've noted, so it's not only the intergovernmental mobilization from between city emergency and state emergency. And state emergency to federal emergency. Um, where is that sort of intergovernmental, uh, expressed, uh, mobilization? It is also a, allows for greater local mobilization, both in terms of spaces and overflow capacities. Um, for additional personnel, which we've seen recently, uh, with. The, uh, the forty or so specialist team, uh, from the military that has been sent to St. Louis. Um, and I. To, it's your question with more, uh, sort of tangible supporting documents, I will note that. In the file for resolution one seventy, the, um, resolution second read, item twenty one. Um, there are four additional supporting documents that speak to this. Um, you articles and, and, uh, a resolution from the governor. So it, it does increase funding, um, really it, it's. And I'm apprehensive to say it's rather sort of a bureaucratic trigger, right, again, in that a state of emergency designation or declaration from. Uh, from a higher official in this case, the governor. Just allows certain processes to go into motion, um, from the SEMA perspective, so from our emergency management agency perspective. Um, that is governed by the, uh, Robert Stafford Act, which was amended in May twenty twenty one, I believe, by the federal government. Um, NIMS, the N-I-M-S, uh, and ICS as well, so. It. It's sort of a. A mobility, uh, related move, and this resolution in particular is meant to be. Focus on our medical care providers, our medical care facilities and our capacities in both our hospitals and personnel staffing.
Great, let me ask another question, is, um, is the coordination to, to request for a state of emergency? Um, uh, is. Does, is a resolution necessarily required? Um, can't just at the request of the mayor, the health director in consultation with other health, uh, professionals. Call the governor's office and say, hey, we need a state of emergency here. Uh, does it, does the apparatus of a resolution from a political body? Is that needed here, in other words, if the health director and mayor decide in communication with the region and the health professionals. Uh, and the SEMA director, they could just short circuit, uh, the process, which I think you're discussing today.
That's an excellent question, Alderman the sixteenth, and it's one that I've, I've debated quite heavily myself in presenting this resolution. Um, in my conversations with the Director of Health, with the SEMA Commissioner, uh, Human Services, so on and so forth. Um, it's really more so an all hands on deck sort of situation, a united front, if I, if I. And that while they were preparing, uh, those aforementioned divisions and departments themselves were preparing their emergency. Um, requests, and we, we did see one of them filled by the governor Alderman with the, uh, medical personnel that were sent to St. Louis. Um, that was a request by the Metropolitan Pandemic Task Force.
Aye.
For emergency relief without a state of emergency declaration. What it does is this resolution complements those other efforts and it helps to further support them because we, as the elected officials of the city. By taking a formal stance and making a formal request, um, sort of further. Cement the, and further validate this request, right, because we have to, as you very expertly alluded to. Um, we have to rely on our, our medical personnel, our, uh, medical experts. Our emergency management experts and so on and so forth, so you are correct in that. There are other ways of sort of bypassing this, uh, this, this method of approach. Um, it's all about avenues in governance, right, which avenue do we take to get from point A to point B? So this is a supplementary and complimentary act on behalf of the Board of Alderman, which is why I want to be sensitive to. Uh, whether or not this is the proper time.
Sure, yeah, I think I would agree, and one final question, and thank you, Alderman, um. Do you, do you think the, the governor will respond at all if we, if we pass this and, and make some noise?
Well, you know, that, that has also been quite the question, and I do appreciate it because. Well, you know, that that has also been quite the question, and I do appreciate it because it, you know, every single person in this meeting and every single person at this board knows what it feels like to be St. Louis versus everybody else, right? I can certainly feel that the state of Missouri and the city of St. Louis are are very frequently at odds. However, my two thoughts on it are both the city of St. Louis and the state of Missouri are united under our state motto. Salus popula supremam lex esto, which is the welfare of the people is supreme law. And also an opportunity for you for me to use my Latin. So thank you, Alderman of the sixteenth for that small unintended gift. But not only are we united by that, we are also the elected representatives of the city, and I believe we're in the unique position that while we collectively represent three hundred one thousand citizens, we effectively serve in medical capacity, serve the greater portion of eastern Missouri, which Dr. Garza spoke to yesterday. So I in approaching this, I believe that, you know, I've I've approached it with the perspective that it's not just the citizens of Ward twelve that I'm thinking of and trying to be thoughtful of as I approach this resolution. It's not just the citizens of St. Louis. It's the citizens of eastern Missouri and arguably western Illinois. I'm not prepared to to cross state state boundaries, though, in this conversation, Alderman. And indeed, one of the articles I've heard as a document speaks to that as well. How a seven P M Walmart run and makeshift ICU in a rural Missouri hospital saved a dying patient by St. Louis Public Radio News. So you know what? It sort of comes back to the question, what is a resolution? Right? What is the benefit? What is it actually accomplish? I think that it again, it further complements and it further cements the efforts of our other divisions, our expert public administrators and medical providers. There is an accompanying letter with Alderman that further is meant to reinforce the the call for a state of emergency. And the intent was hopefully to get a little aldermobile together and to actually hand deliver it. Because St. Louis does not have a inadequate enough presence in Jefferson City. And, you know, I I think that we have to start being a little more proactive in indirectly making these requests as well, having a physical presence there. So it's not just a let's pass this resolution and pat ourselves on the back, which is a fear of mine. It is a what is it going to take to help encourage the hearts that be in Jeff City to protect not just the citizens of St. Louis, but the citizens of eastern Missouri?
Great. Thank you. Mr. President, I have no further questions, but I think, you know, my thoughts are maybe in line with the Alderman from the twelfth is is speaking about in real time that it's it's quite possible that maybe we don't need to officially act as as a resolved body here today on this. I have nothing further. Thank you.
All the women from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I don't need to ask questions. I just want to make a brief statement, first of all, to acknowledge the Alderman from the twelfth ward in his precise reconsideration of the place and point of time. I think that is very, very responsible, and I shall support the idea that maybe this is not the right time, and we probably will see a time again in the future that we will be prepared for and move in a, you know, more timely manner. So I do appreciate all his efforts. And as you all know, we are trending down, but we also have announced earlier this week that there is another variant out there. It hasn't arrived here yet, but we can be visual and having that ready and available, we can move faster if needed. So thank you very much. That's all, sir.
Thank you. All the all the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And I also want to thank the Alderman from the twelfth for bringing this discussion in front of the board. And a couple of things to add on that he mentioned that a state of emergency has done for us since the beginning of the pandemic back in March of twenty twenty, and it allows some flexibility for licensure for medical staff. So for out of state medical staff to come in and work in Missouri hospitals. There are some changes to the way that they license bed space within the hospital. So they were allowed a little bit more flexibility on establishing beds where there may not have been otherwise. And, you know, allowing for the National Guard to come in and do relief efforts throughout the city. So staffing of medical hospitals, helping with food banks, preparation and getting food out the door, that type of a thing. So I I agree that we are trending downwards, and I, you know, also don't know how much the governor is going to pay attention to a resolution from St. Louis, although we wish that he would. I, you know, I do think this the state of emergency was put in place back in the spring of twenty twenty and had been in place through June or through December thirty first of this year, and it was a really unfortunate withdrawal of those those flex that flexibility, that staff capacity. When our administrators at our hospitals are are helping out janitorial staff, they're helping move patients, they are helping. And in all, you know, all of all of our hospital staff are all hands on deck right now, and they still are. And we are, we are still seeing. I think it was fourteen deaths yesterday were reported in our regional hospitals. And that's that's continuing. And so some of the discussion that we had in the committee was around. You know, what what does a state of emergency allow for? What does that give our hospitals? And it's really that flexibility to respond as needed. And like the Alderman from the nineteenth mentioned, there is another variant that hopefully will not hit as strong as Omicron did because of the amount of infections that are already present within our community and hopefully that immunity, along with vaccinations and folks who have been recently infected, will keep those numbers lower. The state of emergency, I I don't know that it has a significant state burden in keeping it in place, but it does allow us a massive amount of flexibility to be able to respond as quickly as possible. So you know, I I will defer to to what the group wants at this point. I I think that this conversation is incredibly well timed, that we have it, that we express our need as a community to have these measures in place so that that our hospitals can do what they do best and save people's lives. But I I thank everyone for the discussion. If we're if we're going to hold on to it today, then I I am grateful that we will have it in pocket as needed to respond and and hopefully in coordination with all levels of our government that we can request this from the governor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty first.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the twelfth yield to question?
Alderman from twelve, we yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty first.
I will, yes.
Alderman from the twenty first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Alderman. I have some of the same concerns as my colleague from the sixteen. And I just wanted to know, Alderman, what was the conversation like with the mayor's office or the Department of Health or even SEMA, the City Emergency Management Agency? What was the conversation like in broad detail in terms of bringing up this?
Well, kind of like herding cats, quite frankly. As you can imagine, everyone is incredibly all hands on deck at the moment, again. And the, you know, the director of health, human services, the SEMA commissioner, other various members of the mayor's office have been very kind in allocating time for this conversation at all hours of the day. So I did consult with the mayor's office. Whenever I reach out intergovernmentally or whenever I'm I'm making a resolution such as this, I do try to keep everyone aware, sort of as a heads up, as a courtesy. And, you know, the the stance of both myself and the mayor's office is that we are separate branches of government. So I I nor anyone else on this call needs the approval of the executive branch to make such a move. They did offer their approval and their critiques and their edits and so on and so forth, but any actions they take is is incumbent upon them. This is an action that we as legislators, as a legislative branch of government can take. Again, acknowledging that, you know, a resolution is just a a formal stance by the body, right? We cannot declare state of emergency on behalf of the state. So I I I want to acknowledge and speak to that shortcoming of this. This is a, again, it is a supplementary supportive action. And quickly, Mr. President, am I coming through okay? I'm getting a bit choppy in my
Yes.
Okay. Okay, apologies if I start to break up, Mr. President, Alderman of the twenty first, but all right, the twenty first that I did I adequately answer your your question there?
Ah, sure, sure. So my next question is now in our Missouri v. statutes, the governor or the legislature that slated and declared state of emergency has any state representatives or or two area state senators, have they been involved in the drafting of this resolution?
They've been consulted. They have indeed been consulted. And again, it it's been challenging to move quickly on this because, again, the numbers change daily. They again are changing for the better, it seems, but as the Alderwoman of the nineteenth pointed out, we don't know what's sort of down the pike. So it's been difficult to get swift responses in in this, right? There have been many responses, but there were consultations and conversations with state reps and and sort of state officials. Also, in the sense of not so much in the drafting, but in the sort of heads up, hey, this is what we're doing. I'm very lucky to have active channels of communication with the South City State reps, for example, and several North City State reps as well.
Okay, very good. I'm just a little concerned about this, the resolution. So I hope that the that the idea is to put this on hold for a while for further discussion. Because as you know, when when a governor declares a state of the emergency, he has all rights and powers to direct, restrict and regulate the movement of local government agencies and local law enforcement. So I don't know what that would do in terms of in terms of fighting this pandemic that we have. We all know what the Republicans are doing right now in fight of mass mandates. So I'm not sure that we want to give this a exorbitant amount of power to a Republican governor and a Republican legislators. And I would hope that that further consideration is given to our local delegation here in the St. in the city of St. Louis. I believe we have, I know my colleague from the eleventh can correct me, but I believe we have eight, I think we have eight state representatives in our delegation, and I will hope that they will all be on board with this before we introduce a resolution like this, since you just said this does give us the official stance of the Board of Alderman. I would hope that they are included in it. And vice versa, I think if they're doing anything that that regulates our city or that is specifically designated for our city, I will hope that they will consult the Board of Alderman in the various Aldermans that 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 serve their constituents in their districts. So I hope that we will put this on hold. I do have some some further questions about it, but I would not delay with a point. I think I pretty much make myself clear, but I do appreciate you, Alderman, and thank you for asking, answering my questions. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty first. All the ones from thirteen.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. I think one of the problems we've seen throughout the pandemic is when elected officials, politicians are putting their own knowledge of of this virus ahead of public health officials. So to me, if the public health department and leaders there asking us to do this, if this is something that they want our support in, to me, that's that's enough. And and that, I think, needs to be something we're listening to and 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 working on. I did second the motion, and if the Alderman from the twelfth decides to put it on the informal, I'm happy to withdraw my second, but I'll I'll wait to see what happens there. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? No further discussion. Alderman from the oh, one from twenty six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I don't have any further discussion. A lot of the things have already been said that I was thinking, especially in regards to my reservations, but I just wanted to let Alderman Stevens know from the twelfth that sign me up for the alter wagon.
All right, all right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Right, Alderman from the twelfth, you recognize to close and to put it on the informal calendar, the the lead on the bill can do that at any time. So you can just ask that it be put on the informal calendar, no seconds or anything have to be removed to do that.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of the board. Small correction to the Alderman of the twenty six. It is the aldermobile, not the alderwagon. I'm just that is what I call my personal vehicle, the aldermobile. No, um more seriously. Again, I a few things that I in rap in closing, I wanted to touch on is that I envision this resolution number one seventy not as being from the Alderman of the twelfth or being from Bill Stevens, but for being from the Board of Alderman. So I do want to sort of voice my stepping back from it in in sort of taking myself out of whatever limelight or there might be. My approach to it has been, if this is well received, it was a group effort. If this is terribly received, I acted alone and it was all me. I do believe that this is supported by the Missouri Hospital Association, which has spoken to, has consistently maintained their stance of a of a renewal of a statewide state of emergency because they need those resources. Dr. Garza spoke to that yesterday in that, you know, our ICU capacity is still very limited, staffing is still an issue, and everything across the board is still extremely high. It's just lower from what has been its highest rate yet. And the final two pieces, if Governor Parsons is going to ignore us, he's going to ignore us now, and he's going to ignore us later. That is something I have to consider as I as I very quickly make my final decision. And then finally, I do believe in the the legal ethos of parents' patri and that we are caregivers of of our citizenry, that we are sworn to uphold and protect them as best we can. And and I'm trying to very quickly balance a lot of public administrator support and public administrator opinion while also recognizing that we are a political body and that this could end up doing harm instead of good, Mr. President. So with that, I do think that I will ask for it to be moved to the informal calendar for the time.
Man Clark, please make note of that. Place Resolution one seventy on the resolutions informal count.
So noted. That's extent of second reading, resolutions committee reports and adoption.
Miss Lennis, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, February the eighth, twenty twenty two, HUSS will have a meet at nine A M via webinar. Wednesday, February the ninth, twenty twenty two, Streets will have a meet ten A M via webinar. Friday, February the eleventh, twenty twenty two, full board meet, ten A M via webinar. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements, all the ones from fourteen?
Yes, pursuant to this discussion. And knowing that we are in a crisis for healthcare, there is another crisis besides the COVID. There is a critical shortage of blood donors and in the blood bank right now. And I'd like to remind people that the comptroller is hosting a blood bank on Monday, February seventh, from eleven to three. And I would encourage all of my colleagues, if they're able to donate blood, you can call, it's on the city website, you can call and make an appointment. And I would, this is something we can individually act on and do if our health allows to donate blood and to get the blood bank up and running. We're in a critical shortage, and with a lot of the violence going on in the city, we may lose more people than we would normally. So this is something we can all act on and encourage our constituents to act on. Get out, donate your blood, and let's get the blood banks full so that people can be attended to. Again, the comptroller is hosting a blood bank or a blood donation center Monday, February seventh, from eleven to three at City Hall. Please sign on and sign up. If you can't do it. Please sign on and sign up. If you can't do it, then there's many other opportunities. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, for that announcement. Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of Black History Month, I'd like to just make a few comments. First off, you know, it's very important for us to acknowledge individuals that have come before us and the things that have happened prior to us being able to sit here in these seats. My announcement is about Black History Month in general and the Black Caucus and what we have as a culture have been working towards for some four hundred years and trying to gain some type of respectability here in this country. I want all of my colleagues to understand that this is not just about a month where we speak about the great things that we have contributed to this country. This is also a month that I believe that America should be releasing many of its dirty secrets. This is like American detriment month. This is the only month that America comes forward and recognizes the amount of detrimental things that they've done to the different societies that they have impacted over the years. And our society is one of them, our culture is one of them. For the Latin Americans and Asian Americans and other ethnicities out there also, Amer- America has done terrible things to many, many countries and many, many people and many cultures. This is a month where people can recognize that the Americans do recognize that they have done some things. And specifically to black people, which I appreciate us being able to be the front runners in, in leading, I would say somewhat of a internal battle, because we all are Americans, but we all are trying to figure out how to heal from the different things that have happened in our past. So we can move forward and create some type of a bright future for our children and those individuals that will be our children's children. Uh, this is a month that America says sorry and black people say, honestly, we don't forgive, because there are things that you have not done to reiterate us, things that have not been done to right the wrongs and the atrocities that have taken place here within this country. And continually take place every single day that we wake up in the morning, we look outside, our grass is not cut. We look outside, our homes are falling apart. Our communities have been falling apart for a very, very long time, and it's based off the land that was stolen from us before the Americas ever were the Americas. So one of the things I want to touch on today is the Louisiana Purchase, which is the largest purchase in American history. Where we live at right now is in Missouri, which used to be France, and before and after was France, it was ceded to Spain. And right after Spain, in eighteen oh three, that was ceded back by Napoleon somewhere around seventeen ninety-nine. And America bought it. So when we talk about the Native Americans that were here, there were plenty of black people, there were plenty of natives, if what you call them, before the Americas were ever sold by France to the Americas in general. So the land that was taken from us, and as you know, back in the day, when you settled along water, that's where most cultures settled along, that is where communities thrived at. Just a note here, in the future, are just in our, our recent history, we've had communities that were completely obliterated by our government, and we built highways right along the river where all of these black people lived at. So the history of St. Louis is, is rich in Native Americans and not just the, the Native Americans or Indians, as, as we would call them, but actual black people at the same time. We were here prior to slavery, we were here doing slavery, and while we talk about America being the frontrunner in our detriment, the French was also a really, really big problem for us. We need to start talking about the individuals who have contributed solely to our detriment. Napoleon was one of them. He reenacted slavery right in eighteen, right in the eighteen hundreds before America was given or sold back to, I mean, or sold to America, I'm sorry, during the French Revolution. So it's extremely important for us to know those individuals who have played a role within our lives and the problems that exist today and why it is that we should be stripping some of these names down. King Louis, which was the, the French king there, he also was a proponent and an advocate for slavery. St. Louis is named after an individual who condoned the detriment that exists in our communities today. So as our children grow up and individuals grow up in these communities, and you wonder why we're pissed off, why it is that we feel left out, because we have been left out. This country took everything that we had. You took our wealth away. You took our stability away. You took our communities away. You took our ability to communicate with each other away. And then you told us to make America great again. So as we start this day, and we end this first Board of Alder meeting, I would love for the individuals that and this is just, we, we gotta be real about what's happening here that don't look like me, you know, in, on this board. To educate yourselves also on the reason why this city looks the way that it looks. And really look back in history and look at the time where we were incorporated versus where we are right now, because you all in very pivotal positions. We have hundreds of millions of dollars in this city right now, and we have an entire side of town that has been left to decay because of the color of the skin of the individuals who occupy that side of town. You have always outnumbered us in votes. We have never been able to vote in this entire city and have an equal or equitable amount of votes when we come to a conversation and trying to figure out how it is that we can make these sides of town mirror each other and actually elevate the people who occupy. White people left this city in droves when black people stayed and occupied. So the individuals that are still here, we appreciate not the, the, the white flight that could have happened that didn't happen. But we also know that there is a hell of a lot of history between these different sides of town that have not been righted. And I think that with the board reducing right now, this being Black History Month, this should be one of the last, this is the last Black History Month that we will experience when we are not at each other's throats and trying to secure a position within the Board of Aldermen. The city has never been equitable since its inception, since its inception. We've never had, once again, any equitability. So I would say with this being a year, two years after the four hundred year curse that was supposed to be on us to start it in sixteen nineteen started, I would hope that you find it in your spirits as we continue forward, and you have mayors like DeShaward Jones, presidents like President Reed and Comptrollers who control our dollars like Comptroller Green. There are some significant changes that need to take place in St. Louis, and it needs to take place now, and you all wield the power to be able to help us vote on things that will bring legacy to us all. Even though we're twenty-eight and we'll reduce into fourteen, we have some great things that we can do before those things happen. Our side of town has not seen any of the things that we would like to see to what gives children hope in our communities. That's why we grow up and we leave. But before we left, there was a community. There used to be viable businesses there. There used to be viable, not viable, I'm sorry, there used to be instrumental individuals who influenced the culture that we have, that we've lost, because everybody feels like they have to leave. Let's bring services back to the north side of St. Louis, the west side of St. Louis, and those south side parts that have had an influx of population by black, by black individuals and not the services followed. You know, their reputation precedes them, so when we get there, we still get the same services they get from the north. So with some of those white aldermen out there that are experiencing the same problems that we are experiencing every single day, the same issues that we are experiencing, listening to the same stories that we are hearing on the north and the west, you all have the power to stop some of that rhetoric. The population within this city is equal, but the power has never been, and it will never be. If you all don't start looking at the history of what has happened and the future of what can happen, right now, right this second, before this board reduces, you have the power to change the entire face of this city. Working with not only the Black Caucus, because there are individuals that are black that ain't a part of the Black Caucus, but working with the side of town whom we know deserves better. Those sides of town. So we have money to do these things, and every single week I plan on with other black alderpeople bringing businesses to the forefront who are trying to change that rhetoric. It's not just dope dealers out here. We got individuals making all kind of things that are producers within our communities, but they have not had the opportunity to be elevated. We don't own communication. We don't own towers. We don't own the TV. We don't own the radio. We don't own the way that messages get out to our people. Your people do. So we need to let that sink in, and as we try to figure out what we're going to do about our city, especially with the summer coming up, what we're all finna be focused on, the entire government is going to be focused on this summer and how it is it restructures itself. We need to figure out how we restructure our city and restructure the people in it, because no matter what, no matter how many of us reduce, we still gonna have the same amount of problems. We have too much money now in our bank to not figure out how to eradicate some of the issues within this city, at least address them in a way to what we see. There is analytical data shown when we have reductions, which we don't have right now. Our people have needed help for four hundred years. We were here before America was sold. Started in sixteen nineteen, look up the history, in sixteen ninety-nine, it was still owned by France. Eighteen oh three, it was once again sold to the Americas. These black folks were here first. Now, right now, black folks do not go out here and do the best that we can to put our names on any type of census, because whenever white folks know where you are back then, you got killed, your whole community's got eradicated. So we were not in any type of position to go out here and get counted. But on record, there were sixty-six thousand slaves here in the Louisiana Territory before Louisiana Purchase took place. We know for sure, it's black folks, that's false. Many, many, many more individuals. Ain't no white folks came down here and went to every single place that was in the Louisiana Territory and took a check mark. We didn't have no internet. Where are the books at? Where are the information? Where is the information that actually can sustain the information that's out there right now? It's not there. There were millions of us already here. And the French were a part of ensuring that there were millions of slaves already here, and there were undocumented slaves also, individuals that were not slaves at the same time. So with those things being said, the land here was stolen from us, and when we put bills together over the next few months for my white colleagues and my other ethnic colleagues, because it is one of them over here, it's my guy, Bret and Ryan, Asian American, listen, I want all of us as minorities to thrive within this city because we have not been able to do so. It is a time that has come upon us, and I believe that this is a time where we all can do great things. We will be putting some things forward here in the near future to help the minorities within the city, but I hope and I pray that our colleagues that are here have done what's necessary to ensure that you can look at the cup as being something that we're trying to balance out and not trying to take away from. You know, people are already wealthy, let them stay wealthy. But it's time for us to build wealth also for those individuals who have been left out, historically left out, purposely left out, purposely taken from. You took our land, built a highway, and put us in Pruitt-Ivo. That's the city's history. So this is the first day of black history, and I'm gonna go ahead and throw it out there. This city needs to figure out a way to right some of the wrongs and the travesties that have taken place here. The riots that have taken place here, the land stealing, actually stealing. And this is by law. This was sold to the United States under the, the, the guidance saying that they would either buy it from the natives. I'm sorry, buy it from the natives or conquer it from the natives. This is on record, conquer it or buy it, and they conquered it. We still celebrate a day within this city that is one of the worst times in history. You know, Thanksgiving, like these things are things that we have to change, and it cannot happen without us working together. It is time for white folks, black folks, and everybody to start doing what's necessary in the cities to start changing that racist rhetoric that we have. I'm tired of my people feeling left out. I'm tired of us being left out. And you all should be tired too. You all should be tired of hearing us cry and yell and scream on this Board of Aldermen for years and years and years. And if you're not, it's about time you get tired and help us. We don't have to be a city that has the same reputation year after year. You just got number one in homicide again. Now you go look on those records and you find out how many white people died last year. Actually got shot in this city. You're gonna find it somewhere around one to five. But all the other homicides, all the other victims, the perpetrators, they look like us. And it happened from time and time and time again of being left behind. Our fathers being snatched out of our homes. To this day, you take our families from our homes. Hundred years ago, two hundred years ago, you took us from our home, forced us on a ship, made us work for free, for free. And they locked us in cages when we disobeyed. The same thing happens right now. You disobey American law, the, the most locked up people on the planet, all black African Americans. We get locked up, put in cages, and snatched away from our families in twenty twenty-two. White people have the ability to make these changes within this city, not throughout the United States. But because we run our local government, because we do have elections for judges, because we do have individuals in powerful places or powerful family names that have history within the city, we can change some of the things that has historically been our detriment and doing. So once again, as we start this day, this first day or second day, what is the day of February? I'm sorry, the fourth day of February, first Friday. I ask you all, once again, as we bring things forward to try to move the agenda on helping people within this city, do the best you can to have understanding on why certain moves are being made and what it is that we are trying to accomplish. Our people need wealth, generational wealth. You've had years to build it, and we've been years behind building for you. That being said, uh, seeing, I appreciate it. This is Black History Month. You know, every week we'll be bringing people forward that have sacrificed for us. And, you know, I appreciate the white aldermen and other, and other aldermen who sympathize, not only sympathize, but are, are looking towards solving some of these long-term issues that are plagued by communities for such a long time as we bring plans forward and try to bring solutions to the table. But there's no way that we could do it by ourselves. Right now, we had a dope bill right now, just crazy bill. Black folks wouldn't have enough people to vote on it right now. We still, we need three white aldermen to help us out. So I want you all to remember those things, and as we transition into a different board, the city has to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the third. Alderman from the eighteenth.
First, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board of Alderpeople. That would be quicker, because Alderman from the third, thank you for pointing thing that I would just like to use sources that I got my information from. Uh, and some, many of these, uh, books were either written by white people or the, the press was used. So I would just like to cite some sources. I would talk quickly after that. Uh, there are books called overturning violence, overturning the culture of violence, which is by Penny His, who is white. And all white people owe reparations to African people. It's a book written by white people. And then another book called One Hundred Years of Lynchings is written by white people. If you want to read some of the things, a book that I've had for many years called America Is, which is written by Frank Friedel and Henry Dewey. Another book written by, it's called Pipe Dream Blues. Uh, it's written by Clarence Lewisain. Deep Fun Fear, which is written by Zach Norris, which talks about the fear that has been held by these people who say that if most of our budget should be spent on law enforcement, which, and then we have one which was written in St. Louis, this by, I think, a white person. It's called Broken Heart of America. If you like, if, I think all of us should at least read some chapters out of it. It says, St. Louis and the Violence History of the United States by Walter Johnson. There's Dr. King who got, was assassinated. This book was written by a white guy. It says, part in the waters. This book was written by a white guy, um, it says part in the waters. Uh, and then I had a holy Bible, which was written by King, King James, which, uh, if you just read Ecclesiastes, it says money solves all problems, which uh, is right here in the Bible. And then those, and uh, in the same Bible, there are other Bibles that I could cite. But uh, and then we have Malcolm X, um, it was, uh, wrote his book about some of the pro- solution to the problem. What is the main point? Uh, there would, the, uh, there would be the same number of killings of black people than white people if it was not for our history in America. What we see is the conditions that were created by this society by not giving us our reparations. I have read that we are owed trillions by several sources. It is also, a resolution has been presented by two alderpeople on this board about, uh, uh, a, a US representative, uh, uh, and now I think almost the majority of, um, US representatives now support reparations uh, for, uh, black people because of the fact that, uh, when you take two hundred and fifty years of forced labor and then you let a people go without a penny, and then being from the South, born under segregation, we ended up, uh, they say separate but equal. We were denied our rights to, we were, our taxes and labor were taken after slavery, but we were denied our rights to go to, to have any material. For example, when I was a kid, I came, uh, uh, that was what they called, uh, we didn't have any pencils, paper, books, crayon. I didn't know what a book was, but they said it was separate but equal. But they were taking our da- our tax dollars. You couldn't even go to the library. Uh, but then I came here and they put me in special education and gave me a test. I had never seen a test. What is the point? The point is whether it was, uh, it was more intense, uh, sa- uh, across the, uh, Mason and Dixon line, but it was still segregation here. But the point I'm making is, not only was it then, not only after slavery where we, after we had given two hundred and fifty years of free, forced to give two hundred and fifty years of free labor, up until this day, we're the last hire, we're the first fired. We are paid, sometimes we're not paid at all for our labor like in prison because we wouldn't be in prison if it wasn't for the Democratic Party and the Republican Party who are in power allowing, I'm not say, when I say allowing drugs to come over here, we had a power. We haven't had the power to, to reduce drugs in, in the black community. Because all we had to do was, uh, uh, demand that the countries that, uh, we are funding, not send them and, and then and also use it as, uh, uh, the, uh, healthcare issue. And we wouldn't have those black people being broken away from their families. And I, I read where we spent thirty-nine thousand dollars a year to keep mostly black, a disproportionate number of black people in jail in the federal system. And we, and, uh, we spent thirty thousand dollars a year in St. Louis, right here in St. Louis, to keep black people in jail. When we could, uh, and we starved the other departments that we have. And then we wonder, so that's black history. So I'm still talking about black history, cause everything that happened yesterday is history. So I'm, I'm still in order. So we still got those same people that were there yesterday and most of them are there today. That we was paying a hundred dollars a day to keep these black people, and most of them wouldn't be there. They are only there because they're black. No other reason, and, and the majority of them there are black. And if we took that hundred dollars, gave them fifty dollars a day, and we had a girl that starved in our, in my, in the war that I represent, living in a tent. Uh, and, uh, we could, that, she should have been in a house. So when we talk about, uh, poverty, homelessness, we have resolutions and other stuff we talking about, we have homelessness. We need reparations, we need to, we need a home for every human being. Nobody should have to live in a tent while we tear down houses and leave them open. Leave those houses open to fall on people and kill them, and this is history, black history too, cause it happened in the black community. The firemen died because it helped, house had been sitting there. And I have houses in the Eighteenth War that's been sitting there since I was a kid, open. And, and, uh, so that's history, a black history. They wouldn't be sitting there unless they were in the black community. That's black history. And that, and, and, uh, the same thing with, um, uh, so we must get repar- bef- we must have a guaranteed annual, as Dr. King, Hugh, the lady Hubert Humphrey, who was a Democrat, Augusta Hawkins, who was a US representative, who was for full employment of everybody. Uh, and also those that had either mental disabilities or physical disabilities were to get a ga- were, uh, should get a guaranteed annual income. That's the answer to homelessness. Not building some tents, not building some, letting, uh, permanently letting people live in any shelter. That should be temporary. Of course it's good. I don't want anyone on the street. That's good for today, but I've planned, uh, we should be fighting, we should be asserting, we should be outraged that we can tear down houses, but we can take, and this is black history too, that we can take and spend six, se- almost seven hundred trillion dollars on a federal budget out of our tax dollars to, for the military, and according to Dr. King, we have more than a thousand tons enough nuclear weapons. We have a thou- that we can blow up the world a thousand times. So we don't need just those, we don't need all of those, uh, to be paying all of those taxes for, uh, whether it be on the local level, on the state level, or the nas- or the, uh, national level. We don't need all of that, and that's black history. That money should go to black people for reparations. That's what that money should go for. Reparations, then we can have drug treatment, our parks, we could have activities in our parks. We could have, these vacant houses could be fixed up, and, uh, people could be living in them. This grass on these lots could be, be, uh, 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 cut, picked up and everything else, and I'm gonna finish with this. And then we could pay after we get co- community controller, the police, community control, black control of the police. After we get there, we could pay our police officers a hundred thousand dollars. We could pay our foster workers a hundred thousand dollars a year. We could pay our park supervisor a hundred thousand dollars a year. We could pay every city employee, and I would love it, and they could work four hours a day. And I would love to see them make a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, and they could have guaranteed healthcare and everything they need. And the money is there. What we had to do is reprioritize, so I'm gonna end with that, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. I, I just wanna remind everybody, this, uh, section is for announcements. Um, Alderman from the twelfth, um, if you have a quick announcement.
Uh, I do, Mr. President, and I've, I've set a timer for myself, so, um, very quickly. Uh, first, the governor's office has reached out to all of us here at the Board of Alderman by email to begin conversations about how we can better collaborate, so resolutions do serve for something. And secondly, um, I've been asked to, uh, make everyone aware of a Senate bill that's coming up. Uh, Senate Bill seven thirteen regarding in the Missouri, um, Senate, I should specify, uh, regarding distracted driving and distracted driving laws in the city, I'm sorry, the state of Missouri. So SB seven one three is now on everyone's radar, and with that, Mr. President, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. All the one from nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I wanted to, uh, announce, uh, and give congratulations to Brick River Cider that, uh, is located at Twentieth and Washington Avenue. They're going to be expanding with a new facility, and they're gonna be, uh, increasing their volume of production. Uh, as you know, we are blessed in a city and we're not using all of it as we should. We are continuing to have businesses expand. We are continuing to have developers who want to develop, but we are not doing our best jobs, I think, to help this be a healthy interaction. And so I'm looking, I'm excited about all of this, and I'm excited about people still want to be in the city of St. Louis. And I wanna thank them for not moving to expand, but being creative and staying here in the city of St. Louis. And, and my last comment is, based on all that has been said on various topics today, it has made my heart heavy. His Lord have mercy on us, because we can do a better job. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, all the women. Any further announcements, any further announcements? All the one from twenty-seven.
Uh, this is short and sweet. I just wanted to announce congratulations to, uh, STLTV for coming and, uh, weathering this storm to help us have this meeting today. I am honored that you work for us, is for the city, and keep up the good work, and please be safe when you go home.
Alright, let's give a big round of applause. One more final, final happy birthday to Alderman Oldenburg. Enjoy your birthday today. Happy birthday. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Amazingly, all members are present in the county party today, sir. Thank you.
Alright, excellent. Uh, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to February the eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-two.
It's been moved by Alderman from tenth and tenth. Uh, second by the one from the fourth, in the discussion, all in favor, signify for stand aye. Pose. Motion carries. Stand adjourned.
Be safe out there, be warm.
Yep.